Welcome, everyone, to the Town of Dudley Board of Selectment meeting, Monday, August 22, First call to order, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed in the agenda tonight.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New appointments. Would the clerk like to read the new appointments, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we have Nicole LeBlanc for Recreation Commission, term to expire June 30, 2025. Jennifer Canoyer, Recreation Committee, term to expire June 30, 2024. Jennifer Canoyer, Zoning Board of Appeals, interim appointment until filled. Mark A. Landry, Recreation Committee, ex officio appointment. Roberta Johnson, Recreation Committee, term to expire June 30, 2023. Maureen Chikering, Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire June 30, 2025. Michelle Jervis, ADA Coordinator, no term limits. Library trustee, Adriana Buda, term to expire June 10, 2024, replacing N. Kucherov's elected term.
Does anyone on that list want to speak? Seeing none.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak in behalf of one of the mentioned individuals. Fair approach?
Absolutely, Mr. Clark.
Richard Clark, 65 Airport Road. I come to you this evening as Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and behalf of Adriana Buda. The Board of Trustees is unanimous in its endorsement of Adriana for this position. I expected her to be here this evening. She may have been delayed. She has a four-year-old, and that can change your schedule in a hurry. Just a bit in terms of introducing her, she's identified herself in her letter to us as a teacher of German and ESL, currently working in the Northbridge Public Schools as an ELL teacher. Previously worked at the University of Connecticut as a teaching assistant while working on a master's degree for learning first chapter, first charter school in Worcester, and as an ELL teacher. She is described as a young mother, again, a four-year-old, and recently moved to the town of Dudley. I think it's commendable that she's shown interest in participating in town events, and I would urge you to support her candidacy.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
You're welcome.
It's the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sullivan.
Make a motion, point Adriana Buda, term to expire June 10, 2024, replacing Nicole Kucherov on her elected term, and have you or the administrator on our behalf sending a letter to Nicole thanking her for her service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, next item.
Well, Mr. Chairman. Would you like, would you like this motion, this motion in a group, or would you like them each individually?
Well, we already did, we already did one independent, so let's do the rest.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Michelle Jervis, ADA Coordinator, without a term limit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Michelle.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Maureen Chikering for Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire June 30, 2025.
Second.
Discussion, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Roberta Johnson, Recreation Committee, term to expire June 30, 2023.
Second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. Four, zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Mark A. Landry, Recreation Committee, ex officio appointment.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Jennifer Canoyer, the Zoning Board of Appeals, interim appointment until filled.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, on just note, before we move on to the next one, Jen Canoyer has stepped up as we search for, um, to fill that position, fill that role, and as soon as that role is filled, we'll, we'll switch her back off. She's serving on several committees now, and we appreciate her helping us out to keep these committees viable.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Jennifer Canoyer, Recreation Committee, term to expire June 30, 2024.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one final motion that we approve Nicole LeBlanc, Recreation Commission, term to expire June 30, 2025.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to thank everyone that volunteered to fill all of these positions, if you're here or not, thank you. That's how this town runs, volunteers. We, we could never pay the salaries for all the work that needs to be done, and taxes would go up astronomically. So, just a sincere thank you to everyone that's volunteering their time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next item, citizens' comments. Anyone wish to speak on an item not already on the agenda? All right. New business, greatest hits cannabis company. Please come to the mic and introduce yourself.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Nick Adamopolis, on behalf of DMA Holdings, doing business at his greatest hits. Ultimately here today to ask, with the October town meeting coming up, if the town would consider a bylaw change to extend the closing hours for the store. Under the current bylaw, the store is to close by 8:00 p.m. We would be requesting that that bylaw potentially be changed to 10:00 p.m. so that we can be in the same range as the stores around us in this area. I can tell you that my understanding is that many individuals have been showing up at the store around 7:30 or 7:45, and ultimately having to be turned away due to the fact that individuals cannot be there past 8 o'clock under the CCC's regulations. I can tell you that The Vault in Webster and Caroline's Cannabis in Oxbridge are closing at 10 o'clock, Caddy Brook and the other, and the other store in Southbridge are closing at 9:00, and Green Gold and Charlton are closing at 9:00. So, the extension at least allow us to be competitive with those businesses around us. But it is a bylaw change, so we'd have to go to town meeting. So, we're ultimately here just asking for the support of the select board with that potential change.
Town administrator, any comments? Board?
Do you need a motion for this, or?
I don't, I certainly don't have any objection to it. If we're going to compete with neighboring communities, we might as well compete.
Mr. Sullivan?
Just a quick question to the police and fire. Been no issues down there, right, since they've been opened? I know it's been pretty quiet, which is good.
Oh, good.
We'll keep that going.
Yeah, bottom line, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we...
We have to move on, Mr. Chairman, this night? Since it's going to be a town meeting thing?
Well, if it's going to be a town meeting, we might, the director, maybe do a draft an article, I'm happy to do that.
Do you need a motion to do that?
If you'd like, all right, I can just go ahead and take the chair's direction to draft an article. I was just meaning that last Mr. Adamopolis to draft an article for me.
And then put it, put it to the people to decide if that's okay.
Right.
Please do. Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Maybe a little early, but I would gladly make a motion as a board that we support this request, increase the hours to be competitive in neighboring communities, show that we support, we always have, we support this industry, especially this location. I think the board wants a second, and I think we're on the record saying we support this request.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Now, please, right here.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda. The Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, accept the following documents for compliance with ADA federal civil rights law. A, designate an ADA coordinator. B, public notice of ADA requirement. And C, establish a grievance procedure.
Mr. Chairman, a little background on this, is, as the board recalls, we did a, a review of our compliance with the American with Disabilities Act about a year ago, and we got a full report back. Tonight, we appointed Michelle, the ADA coordinator. That's one thing off the checklist for us to be compliant with the American with Disabilities Act. Michelle has a public notice that needs to be signed by the board chair of the ADA requirement, meaning that the town needs to opt in and be ADA compliant. And the final thing is to establish a grievance procedure, which we, I believe we have drafted up, based on input from the people who did the review for us, and having had town council review. So, these are no cost, three items we can check off the list, getting us closer to ADA compliance.
Need anything else from us?
Maybe just formally accept the following documents as listed in the, in item B.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the ADA documents as presented and signed by you tonight.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item C, Mr. Kamanyani, vote and sign interim note for the PFAS project.
As he comes up, Mr. Chairman, there was, there's an A and a B, the treasurer asked for these two items to be placed on the agenda for tonight, along with some suggested language for the motion. That is below.
Okay. Mr. Kamanyani.
Mr. Chairman, which one would we like to do first? Sort of the formulaic one for borrowing some money, or the longer one where the clerk is going to read the full two paragraphs onto the record?
Thank you. He knew it was coming anyway. I'm fine with that. I, I'd just like to know if, will that all be one motion, or do you need that in seven separate motions?
I think if you, if you read the motion that's on the agenda, that was the language it was provided.
I'm just wondering if we vote on each individual, because I, I'm having a foggy memory remembering the last time we did this.
One big motion, isn't it?
Yeah, it's one, one solid.
Okay.
Two pages. You want me to go?
Yes, please.
I'll apologize in advance for this. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the town shall issue a bond or bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $11,500,000, the bonds pursuant to chapters 29(c) and 44 of the general laws, and a vote of the town passed May 24, 2021, Article 24, for planning or construction of drinking, water, infrastructure, the project. That in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note or notes, the notes, from time to time in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $11,500,000. That each bond or note shall be issued as a single registered security and sold to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, at a price determined pursuant to the financing agreement. That the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate, and the principal maturities of each bond and note, and to execute a financing agreement or agreements with the trust with respect to the sale of the bonds and notes, such date, form, and maturities, and the specific rate or rates of the bonds and notes to be approved by a majority of the Board of Selectment and the treasurer, and evidenced by their execution of the bonds or notes. That any certificates or documents relating to each bond and note collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one in the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to each document. And electronic signatures or any of the documents, on any of the documents, shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents, and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. That, that all action taken to date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including the execution of any loan commitment or agreement by the treasurer, are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed, and that the treasurer and the other appropriate town officials are each hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient to carry out provisions of this vote, including execution and delivery of the financing agreements and project regulatory agreements relating to the project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Rich, this is like the standard stuff we've gone through before, right? It's usually presented differently, but I just want to make sure it's all a...
It's, it's compliance, this is...
Yeah, right, I remember. It's been a couple of years since we've done it. Thanks.
This is 21-16, if I remember that number off the top of my head, eleven and a half million dollars. This is the largest PFAS case, this is the eleven and a half for it. This is your interim financing, so we're doing work. They're setting up sort of the interim note, as opposed to trying to manage the financing internally, they do it externally. We issue a note, and the trust buys it.
Okay. Okay, we have a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. And B, vote and sign the BAN for the two public safety vehicles, two cab and chassis units, and one brine machine.
So, if we could, Mr. Chairman, I have, I'm trying to keep everything separated here, two, two separate issuances. We're going to ask for the board's signature on three of these, we're going to have the clerk on three of them separately. So, it's an attestation that was read into the record in an open meeting. So, I appreciate everybody's patience. How did we, I need to start breaking. I want to do this.
He won't like the blue.
I know. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Just pass them around.
Thank you. I think what's going around is Drag Week.
Yeah.
You are the town clerk that's here as well. Hard to work over there, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, man. Not unnoticed, the notes. Not unnoticed. And I mean that the best way possible.
Is this anything?
I should have three copies.
Yeah.
Of yours, I wanted to see. There, there would be your copy, and then you wanted to make your, your little notes and what have you.
I have a clerk. He's like the apple terms. Yeah, I remember, I'm sure. Like the apple terms of service here. I've seen that stuff.
I, that's not what I was after.
Thank you. All right. Onto the next up.
Vote and sign the ban.
Vote and sign the ban for the two public safety vehicles, two cab and chassis units, and one brine machine. Mr. Mas.
Mr. Chairman, to you, to Rich. Rich, is this three separate or one big one?
Pardon?
Is this three, one for each order?
Single short-term, no.
Okay. No motion, just sign.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We have a note, we have the clerk's certificate, and we have the three certificate and covenant as to tax exempt status. So, town use, municipal rate, or the tax exempt rate, as opposed to privately run golf courses that the town is, we don't want to get into those.
So, we have the note going through.
Normally, this is not done in an open session, it's just witnessed by the town clerk, this is where you get the, the midday text, and you come in, but we figure we'll get two for one, and it's, it's appreciated. That floor has been, Christmas is early, not.
Yeah. Rich always brings the pens.
He gets the pen.
It was Joe Manchin.
It's not a cross-charg.
Joe Manchin got the pen last night.
See, you don't get the faring.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Town Clerk, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, old business, attorney Jeff Blake, Jeff Walsh, town engineer, lead discussion.
I'm going to go last.
Oh, sorry. Scratch that. Town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the interest of time, I will be brief. You'll, you'll notice that tonight we have a different cable operator with a great resume who's come forward and, and joined the crew. Her name is Amanda Gage, and she has a lot of experience doing both cable operating and social media in the town of Auburn. I'd really like to have her just come up and tell us a little bit about herself, but can you put that on autopilot so that it shows on there and then come up and give us one minute of your resume?
Sure.
Thanks. We also had a second person that was not able to attend tonight, but she will attend next, at the next meeting, and we'll introduce her then.
Hello, Amanda, I am a Dudley resident. I have eight years prior experience with town of Auburn as the assistant to the cable manager, and assistant IT director, and running their whole social media program. I took a two-year hiatus to take a break because COVID burnt me out with a two-year-old. He's older, and I missed doing all this, so I got my hands back in.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Important position.
Yep. Next, Mr. Chairman. The school district has provided the language through their council for the September 9th ballot question, which is also the same date as the state primary, and as the board recalls, they're seeking authorization to borrow for Dudley school repairs and district-wide repairs for various schools throughout the district. The ballot question will be posted through the clerk's office in both towns, and it reads as follows. Question one, do you approve the regional district school committee of the Dudley-Chelton Regional School District adopted on June 22, 2022 to authorize the borrowing of $7,566,838 to pay costs of making various capital improvements to facilities of the district, which vote provides in relevant part as follows. Voted, the Dudley-Chelton Regional School District, the district hereby appropriates the amount of $7,566,838 for the purposes of paying costs of roof repairs to the Charlton and Dudley middle school buildings, upgrading fire, fire alarm panels and devices throughout the district's facilities, replacing and installing cameras and video infrastructure, upgrading radio communications, conducting an architectural review of all six of the district's buildings, and paying related professional fees associated therewith, and also including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 71, Section 16, end of the general laws of the district agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and it's a yes or no question. That will be on the September 9th primary ballot vote, separate timeline ballot. We've also some, did some additional work on a proposition two and a half override operational question that I'll have more on next week, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, two weeks from now. But I wanted to put that on the board's radar screen and the public's radar screen publicly tonight.
Any questions for the town administrator?
Is the election the ninth or the sixth?
It was the town, she left, I have it as September 9th.
I thought it was the sixth Tuesday.
Sixth is a Tuesday, ninth is a Friday.
So, then it would have to be the sixth. My apologies.
Okay.
It's the same day as the primary vote.
Right. They have to leave. Scribbler's error.
Correct.
Any other questions for town administrator?
Except as presented, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, there's one thing that came up after the agenda was posted, and as you know, if something was not reasonably anticipated, that I would ask to be put on the agenda, otherwise we're allowed to act on it. And it is, I'm going to try to have it come up here, it's in the, it's in your packet folders, and it was an email that I received regarding childhood cancer awareness month. regarding childhood cancer awareness month. And I'm asking the board to vote a proclamation. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among, among the US children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease is detected in more than sixteen thousand of our country's young people every year. An estimated four hundred thousand children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded nearly thirty years ago by Steven Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Mac Fact, Cosmax Family, American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated, Kids, Kids Cancer Connection, Lions Club International, Educated, to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at UMass Memorial Children's Medical Center in Worcester, Boston Children's Hospital, Tufts Children's Hospital, Shrine's Children's Boston, Dana Farber Children's Cancer Center, Mass General Hospital for Children, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American, excuse me, Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsors toy distributions, Laftoon Laughing is healing, positive appearance programs, pet assisted therapy, KCC Supercare Experience, educational programs, and hospital celebrations in honor of child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. And now therefore, the Board of Selectmen recognize the childhood cancer awareness month from September first, twenty twenty-two to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, this twenty-second day of August, twenty twenty-two. It's our only chance to vote on it, so I'm asking you to vote on it tonight. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Mr. Town Administrator, this is, this is to recognize that as the month?
Childhood cancer awareness month is September, and that's it, and that's.
There's no additional?
Just recognizing the month, and it's been done recently at town, town of Auburn, Gary, Brookfield, Grafton, Worcester.
Oh, I was just checking if it was, if there were other.
Ran out of time though.
Just for the discussion, obviously, uh, it's a cause most of us can get behind, so, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Motion a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. All right, back to the agenda. Let's try this again. Old Business. Attorney Jeff Blake, Jeff Walsh, town engineer, lead discussion on betterments for Tobin Farm and Misty Meadows, and answer questions of residents.
Mr. Chairman, as I recall, we've had a, a public information session with, um, one or two members of the planning board, the town planner, the highway superintendent, myself, and, uh, I think Jeff, you were.
I was absent that evening.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan was there. And, uh, they wanted more expertise, the, the people who attended that meeting wanted more expertise. So we'd like to offer them the ability to speak with our legal counsel and our town engineer as well as, um, and answer, to pose any questions that they may have tonight. So if there's anyone, beginning with the board, if the board has questions on members of the public, both of the experts are here willing to answer them.
Get the ball rolling, anything from the board?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anyone have a question from the audience? Just come to the, the mic, tell us who you are and.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Derek Donahue, five Misty Meadow Lane, Dudley.
Hey, Derek.
So we received the, uh, estimated costing, uh, and the revised costing, I should say, based upon it. And I just have some general questions. Um, and I'm really just asking for myself, I'm not representing the, the road or the residents of the road, it's just my own knowledge. So I just wanna, and some of these may seem blatantly obvious, but I'm gonna ask them anyway. So I just want a general understanding, anything in the red, you're still foreseeing as potential cost savings, correct?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineering. Been working for the town now for a good fifteen years or so, uh, predominantly with the planning board. I prepared a cost estimate for each of the two projects, Misty Meadow Estates and Tobin Farm Estates, uh, in draft form and forwarded them to, to the town. Um, I did not, um, make the final edits to what was distributed to the, um, residents. So I'm, I'm not in a position to speak to what the, the red, um, represents or not. What came out of our office was the first draft. Um, and I understand the, um, through the highway department, um, and their work with the, the town administrator's office, I believe, they were able to identify some work that maybe, um, could be undertaken by the town to, um, reduce the estimated cost that, that we had prepared, but again, I can't, I can't speak to that.
There's a specific question about red lines. Do we have, uh, someone here that can answer?
I think Mr. Walsh hit the nail on the head. That's where we potentially could self-reform some of the work.
Okay.
And imply our costing as well.
Do you are familiar with the red lines?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm a little hard of hearing, I apologize. Uh, could you just repeat that again? I do a little bit of lip reading too.
Could you just?
That, that's correct, the red, as Mr. Walsh said, the red, the red lines show where we may have an opportunity to self-perform some of the work and come in a little less expensive than when it shows.
Okay, but this, and I realize I'm predicting the future, there's no way to really kind of get a good feeling for what that reduction would be.
No.
Just an understanding. So in our earlier discussions, we kind of, kind of batted around the ideas of exclusivity with regard to our development, uh, in that we are on the Oxford line, and there's a significant, significant amount of traffic coming from Oxford. And even the last two weeks with the construction on Dudley Oxford Road. And I realized the detour signage was set up, from what I could tell, to avoid Misty Meadow Lane. There was still a significant flow of traffic increase through that area. You know, we had kind of batted around the ideas of blocking the road, or even, you know, somebody had tossed around the idea of cul-de-sac, you know, putting a cul-de-sac at one end of the stretch. Um, and then I also see a line here in miscellaneous for concrete bounds. So I'm not exactly clear what that is, I didn't know if there was still consideration of, of shutting off the road.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, with, with respect to the bounds, the bounds are survey monuments that are placed along the edge of the right-of-way to differentiate between what will be the, what is the right-of-way and what is the private lots. Um, the road itself is not the edge of the right-of-way, the right-of-way extends onto the grass surfaces. Some people can get confused and think they own very close to the right-of, uh, to the road, which is not the case. And it's standard practice with subdivisions to have bounds installed to demarcate the edge of the right-of-way. And that usually happens late in the construction of a project. With respect, can everybody hear me all right? Okay. With respect to the, um, blocking off of the road, um, I was made aware of that early when we took on this project, um, started working, um, with the town. Uh, quite frankly, I would not recommend that the planning board consider altering the layout of the road to create a, a blocked road at the town line. With respect to land development and land planning and, and emergency responses, the road system extends for both the benefit of Dudley as well as the benefit of Oxford in that the, through traffic and redundant access is provided by that road. Even though the section of it in question where, where I understand cul-de, cul-de-sac was being contemplated, even though that's in poor conditions, uh, for emergency response services, redundant access for subdivision exclusive of emergency responses, I would not recommend to the planning board they alter the layout of, of the road. And if the town of Dudley were to go down that avenue, I would expect that there should be discussions with the town of Oxford as well because the town of Oxford, who has quite a few residents on that stretch of road, would be impacted as well.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Uh, got quite a few. So I know we deferred to the fall meeting for, you know, town vote on this. What would you be estimating for a start date?
Would Jeff answer that?
Sure.
Um, I, I. I think we were looking at it, at a spring start date, at the earliest, right, Jeff? Does that sound? If it passed it in the fall?
Yeah, because that was leading into my next question about waiting, you know, and I'm sure everybody is hoping that oil and gas costs come down, but I'm assuming that based upon the materials and, and the makeup of the materials, you know, if, if the gas and oil goes lower, then we can anticipate a, a greater savings than even what's estimated here, correct?
So before the next question, do we need to bring anyone else up to the table so we can answer questions quickly, or no?
I, I can probably answer them just as quickly if I can, as the chairman, I'll ask them personally.
Okay, thank you.
So. I'll take those. When would the liens kick in?
Happy to answer that, Mr. Chairman. The liens would kick in once you have a overall, um, actual costs. Then there's a process by which the betterment is assessed and it's put on a tax bill. When do they kick in? It, w- once we've made the betterment assessment, once there are actual costs known.
Okay. So we received this breakdown prior to the project, and I realize this is an estimate. Will we receive a similar breakdown at the completion of the project, so we can do like a line-by-line comparison?
It's not typical, that's not typically the way it's done. Typically, there's a overall cost of the project during, during the bidding process and whatnot, you, you may be able to see some of that information. Uh, and, and, you know, there are certain parameters when we go out to bid, um, you know, in consultation with our expert as to what we're gonna be looking at for prices, but at the end of the day, we won't know until the bids come back in.
Well, I guess I just would like to be able to have a sense of how much of the contingency was used. How much of, you know, this particular line item was actually, how close were you to the mark on that?
Yeah, I, I don't know that you're gonna see that kind of, of minutia.
Okay. I would think we should be able to see that. In the original agreement, the original covenant, rather, you know, they talked about no berms. So how did we end up with, uh, a significant cost with berms and whatnot? Can you kind of talk to that?
Well, I haven't seen the covenant, but the street has catch basins, and catch basins work best when there's curb to keep the water in the gutter. I live on a street that has catch basins and no curb, and I'm forever, um, filling gullies along the edge of the asphalt. And the point is, it's standard practice, as I understand it, um, it was probably intended on this project to have berm or curb to keep the water in the gutter.
You've got line items for man, uh, manholes and, uh, and rims and covers and that kind of thing. There are already three on there, I mean, depending on the condition, can they be reused?
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of that?
Can they be reused if they're in, you know?
Oh, the intention would be to reuse anything and everything. With Mr. Murray, um, the two of us went through the project and tried to identify, um, scope of work, what needed to be done to quantify to the best of our ability for preparation of this cost estimate quantities. And, um, from there, we put the pricing to it based upon, um, well, um, standard prevailing wages. Uh, Mass DOT publishes a, um, database of, of, uh, bid items for the last year, and we use those as guidance here because that's the type of bidding environment that the town would be in, um, should this project go forward.
Okay.
So to the point of reusing, um, catch basins, manholes, grates, anything like that, absolutely. Use them wherever we could.
All right. The escrow funds, I can anticipate that being applied, correct? Whatever's lying, whatever's residing in the escrows at the moment, which is approximately eleven thousand, I believe.
When you say escrow, you, you, you mean a charity for the, for the road that was?
No, the money that the builder set aside from each sale of each property.
That's what, that's what I was talking about, yes. Uh, I, I believe that, that that would likely be something that the town could access. If there is money in those accounts, I understand, some may not have it, but.
Yeah, we would apply the general to that.
Okay. And so I understand you're still quoting and bidding then?
I'm sorry?
There would still be quoting, there's a whole quoting and bidding process that needs to occur and whatnot. I'm just trying to understand the whole process for myself.
Well, the, the process is that you, that, uh, the town makes a determination through its, uh, private ways bylaw. There's a certain number of residents on a road that have to request that, uh, that it be, uh, that it be fixed up. Um, we do it through a betterment. We go to the engineers, the engineers come up with a, with a price, uh, it goes out to bid. Uh, we get a bid back, uh, once we have the price. Um, we then are, uh, able to at least let the residents know of, of a ballpark. Um, it's out, it's divided by the number of residents on the road, or depending on, you know, how we do it frontage on the road. Um, once the, their actual costs are incurred and final project costs are done, um, then the town will then assess betterments based on their formula. So it's, it's, it's a fairly straightforward way of doing things.
Okay, I'm just curious. And then for the miscellaneous items, you've got acceptance plans and then as-built plans. None of those are already items that can be gleaned off of the, or gleaned rather, off of the existing plans that went with the deeds or anything like that, these are all things that need to be defined new?
These are documents that are normally prepared at the end of a construction project, subdivision construction project like this, um, for demonstrating the, what work was done and for, um, um, final layout of the road that's in the communities I work in, these documents go before the planning board, uh, who makes a determination whether or not the project's been finally completed. And, um, we felt appropriate to carry these monies, monies for these, for these items because, uh, we, I expected that they would be required at the end of this project.
All right, well, like I said, this was just my own questioning, I'm not speaking for the rest of the residents. I don't know where they necessarily stand, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Uh, anyone else with, uh, questions?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, uh, town administrator. My name is Charles Cormier, eighteen Tobin Drive. Um, I was at the planning board meeting, uh, right after the town meeting and spoke with the planning board. Uh, they had mentioned that they were gonna be doing the, um, the betterment working group, um, at that time, and I had requested to be part of those discussions and that we have a neighborhood meeting so that the residents would know. Um, I reached out to the plan, the town planner, uh, did not receive a call back from them, um, at all on that. And, uh, then we get the estimate last week. I watched it, the, uh, planning board meeting on the tenth, I believe it was, of August. Um, and there was discussion of this, and then the letter was going out, we received the letter. So just from a, a, a resident's understanding part of this, and we heard the gentleman from Misty Meadows, um, I asked at that, the planning board meeting, that we have full transparency of the process. Uh, we've seen nothing to that process. I think it's incumbent upon us, the neighbors, um, of both Tobin Farm Estates and Misty Meadow and any other project that's going through, um, we are the funding source for this project. So the funding source for the project should be able to see the town bids when the RFPs are done and it goes out. And the, uh, the, the opening of the bids are public, we should be able to see that, we should be invited to that as the funding source. Um, we understand the town is borrowing the money, um, but that's, the, the payment of those funds is coming through the betterment that the neighborhood or the neighbors or the residents are paying. So I think, um, again, full transparency should be here, and that transparency is the process. Um, and the process is, we go to the town meeting, which secures the funding for the project. Then after that, it goes to an RFP, and I understand the estimates have already been done, it goes to an RFP. We receive the bids, we open the bids, and, 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 you know, the process, that's what we're asking for. We don't, we don't under, and I'm sure I missed a couple steps in there, but, you know, I think it's incumbent upon the Board of Selectmen to make sure that, that, that process is understood so that we don't get, you know, why are we doing this, what are we doing that for?
Well, let me, uh, let me find out, uh, who's the expert on this process and, look, I'm, I'm happy to jump in on, on at least some of it. Um, I, I think that, that you hit it pretty well, right? That, that there's an RFP, that, uh, there's ultimately an opening of the bid, all of this is public. You know, you as a neighbor can request that, uh, the, the request for proposals. And in there, you'll see scope of work, you'll see drawings, you'll see, you'll see a lot of stuff. I, I think what you're asking for is whether or not you can engineer the project. And, well, it, it, it sounds to me like, I, I, I mean, whether or not.
And, well, it sounds to me like, I mean, whether or not, at some point, we have an engineer here that we retain, we have a town engineer, and those are the, typically the people that are going to be making the call as to whether or not there are berms there and the like, and that's not really something that's usually opened up to the public, to, you know, whether or not we need four catch basins versus three, so. But, other than that, the process is, is public, it's wide open.
I understand that.
Can I ask anyone from the planning to maybe talk about the process that has occurred so far for Tobin Farms? So, I don't think the Board of Selectmen obviously isn't running these meetings, these public meetings, that may or may not have contained the content that we're talking about here. Is that fair?
It is, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, Guy.
Guy Horn, Three Linda Vista, Planning Board Chairman. I was present at the meetings that we had for this street and for Misty Meadows. Basically, what we looked at was, what were the options that were available to the town to try to fix the subdivisions, get them to the standards that they, what was approved by the planning board, with as little waivers as possible? And basically, this is what is being presented to you today.
Correct.
So, basically, so far, there's no waivers being asked for, for either subdivision. And, these are the new quotes, and the only other thing that I would like, maybe if we could have some clarification on, is that when we had the meeting, the way I understood it was, this estimate is just that, it's an estimate, and it's got a contingency on it, and this is for the purpose of going to town meeting to vote yes or no. And then, after that vote, I understood it as it would go out for bid, and then after the bids came in, if fifty percent, I don't know how the bylaw is written, if it's fifty percent of the homeowners or fifty percent of the frontage, frontage, okay, if fifty percent or more of the people that own frontage on the street think that the bid is too high, they still have the option to say no, they don't want to do this work, is that correct?
I don't know that I necessarily a hundred percent read the bylaw that way. I thought it was fifty percent could get it on the agenda and move forward. That being said, I'm sure that the town, if, if, if you thought it was going to be a hundred and fifty thousand bucks, and the bids came back at one point nine million, and the residents are like, no, we're out, we're done, I can't imagine these guys going forward and saying, sorry, you got one point nine million that you're going to be on the hook for. I don't, you know, I-
I think we specifically, we've stated it multiple times.
Yeah.
The way I understood the letter is the article says not to exceed. So, if the article says not to exceed and it exceeds, then-
Well, well, but, but the issue then becomes, it might say, it might say a hundred thousand, like I just gave, and it comes in higher than that. We would have the ability to try to go back to town meeting to get the additional monies. That's typically the way one of these projects would, would work. But again, at that point, I think the Board would pull the plug on it. If eighty percent of the residents come in and say, or even fifty-two percent of the residents come in and say, look, we're out, we wanted it before, it's too much, then I think you'd end up having the plug pulled.
That's right, because I mean, you've got a twenty percent contingency here, but, I mean, nobody knows what, what, what the prices of oil or gas are going to be next fall, or next spring. And if, you know, it does happen to go to the extremes, and this goes over the twenty percent contingencies, you know, I just, I thought that that was a way for the people to say, you know, they had, they still had a chance to say that they weren't for it.
I think you're seeing all five people up here say, that's absolutely, if they, if they, and if it goes over the appropriation, you got to go back to town meeting to get more money.
Anyways, okay, okay.
So, I just want to clarify something through the chair. I'm not looking to engineer this project, and I don't think anybody in the neighborhood's looking to engineer the project. We're looking to make sure that our money is spent wisely on what's needed. So, I'm not, I'm not against this project, I'm not against the betterment, I'm not, I'm actually trying to help this article go through, and because it's the right thing, and I know it's only going to cost us more as we go down the road. But, you know, in full transparency, it's important for, for, most people don't understand the process. So, to say that while it's public, I get that, but sometimes we've got to go a little further in certain things, to make sure that it's, that it's understood. And it's not to be a watchdog, it's not to say, hey, my buddy can get the loom for two dollars cheaper. That's not what, what this is about. You guys have done the estimate, we trust the professionals in doing it, we just want to make sure we understand the process. So, we're not asking layman questions on the town meeting floor, that we can dig into the substance and say, okay, here's, here's what's, what's actually going to take place. So, you know, when I asked to be on at the, at the planning board meeting to be part of this, it was to help the planning board get the message to the neighbors, and to be able to get that message out. So, I mean, there's an article in the town bylaws, it says if the town has to plow the road, they can charge two hundred and seventy-five dollars and two hundred and fifty dollars per household on that road for every pass. So, I don't think we want to be in that position. We want to get the road so it doesn't have to be plowed, right? So, if I was against this, I never would have brought up that article, it's in the town meeting bylaws. It doesn't make sense. So, we need to get this passed, but we need to work together to get it passed.
Mr. Marcy.
Mr. Chairman, to you, what does success look like in that case? What does transparency look like? Is that more communication?
Just, just an outline of the process, an RFP. Most, most people don't understand what an RFP is.
Was it a document release?
Yeah, just the, just the steps of the process, so that we can ask questions about, okay, when it gets to that point, where are we at? I mean-
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the planning board chair to, you know, can we do that? Is there someplace we can put this?
Through the chair, that as a procurement officer, all of that stuff is public. Any bidding and RFPs and votes and scoping, that's all public information.
We have everybody's email, we have everybody's address and stuff like that, I mean, this is one of those things. Everybody who deals with this every day kind of has an understanding, people who don't, don't, so we need to be like, better about like telling people. I know it's out there.
We can absolutely put it on-
But links, documents, you know, to send it to people. We know who all the houses are, we should do that.
I mean, not to be disrespectful, but-
Pass it.
Exactly.
Intentional communication.
More intentional, push, push it to you guys versus you guys coming and trying to pull it.
Like announcing this meeting.
If the longer, the-
Like inviting the residents to this meeting tonight.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Another step, thank you.
Yeah.
Without that, we're just going to keep asking the same questions, we're not going to go anywhere.
I agree, I hear you.
So, I mean, I was in public service for years, and sometimes you have to go the extra mile to make sure that you can move something along. And if you don't want to do the work, then, then I get it, you don't want to do the work, but it's just going to create more headache for everybody else. We can work together to get this done. So, you know, in, on May sixth, we got an estimate of five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. On May eighteenth, we got an estimate of four hundred and ninety thousand. And now, on July eighth, the estimate that we just got was four hundred and one thousand. So, it's going in the right direction, right? I mean, it's, we're going the direction we want it to go, it's never going to be zero, and, and that's with a twenty percent contingency, so there's a number in there somewhere that, that will settle on through the RFP and the bids, and then, you know, come back to the final determination. But, my concern is that we go to the fall town meeting, and we walk away with it being, you know, tabled to May, which means now we're not going to get it done until October of next year, we're probably going to be in the same plowing situation. So, you know, is, and I'm willing to do whatever I need to do to make sure that we get the message out to the neighbors of both my neighborhood and Misty Meadows and anybody else who's going down this road. Because it's really not our issue, it's a contractor issue. And they bailed on the project, so now we're stuck cleaning up and holding the bag. So, we may as well work together to get that done. So, the other question that I have for the board is, do we have a fall town meeting date yet?
October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth.
October twen, and when is the deadline for articles to be submitted for the town meeting warrant?
I don't think we've published that yet, but that will be published as well.
Could, could I request or ask the board, through the planning board, that we put an article on the town meeting warrant for the private ways to be paid, to be plowed through the winter, based on the highway superintendent's recommendations and inspection of the roads to be plowed? It's done in other communities throughout the Commonwealth, it's a standard town meeting warrant article in some towns, and it's done to make sure that the taxpayers' money, who are the residents that live in these neighborhoods, their money's going in, to the town and being used fairly for the plowing maintenance, not necessarily the maintenance of the road, but at least the plowing of the road. So, the highway superintendent-
Mr. Chairman, can you speak to that?
I'm sorry?
Joe, I think you're familiar with what our, how our bylaws read in terms of the section that you accept, that we need to accept in order to have those-
Which is, I think it was forty, section six and-
We had a discussion about that.
Yeah, the improvements to town, to the ways are okay, but I believe, I didn't, I didn't bring the book with me, but I believe there may be a two-step process, unfortunately, for plowing. But there is the ability to do that, and I can look into it, and if we can draft, well, we can draft-
How about this, we'll take an action to investigate that and report out at the next meeting through the town administrator?
My understanding is a two-step process, is one, the town meeting article gets passed, and two, the highway superintendent or a designee of the town meeting inspects the road, and then any improvements need to be made to the road or paid for by the residents based on the highway superintendent's inspection of the roads.
Yeah, we all know that the reason, another issue is the condition of a private road-
Correct.
-to meet the town requirements, right?
Right.
And we don't want to break town equipment on-
Correct, and that's the liability, they'll only plow within a certain distance, and so, but there is a way to get it done, to make sure that the access is there.
All right, so there's no promises or guarantees today, but what we will do is, we'll understand the process and we'll communicate that and so on.
Mr. Chairman, also, I believe, and maybe just a simple reason, we sent a vote, I believe a previous Board of Selectmen took a vote going from date forward, whatever that vote was taken in the nineties, I believe, not to plow, maintain private roads, continued the statute of state. So, we'd have to probably look at, somehow-
Part of the investigation.
We sending a vote.
Sounds like just a hallmark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your input on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just mention, because it was brought up about people not wanting to do the work, that absolutely, we've had Mr. Walsh, the town planner, has stayed extra hours, the highway superintendent has stayed after hours, the town, a couple of members of the planning board have stayed after hours for this internal group, to make sure that all the information could be gathered that we're talking about here tonight. We've also made provisions to have the town engineer here tonight, as well as town council. So, I want to make sure that we understand that the work is being done. It's not any laziness on, certainly not on the employees' backs.
Once again, there's communication, and, you know, there's, there's dissemination and there's receiving information, and doesn't always line up. So, how do we find the right ways to do everything? Mr. Marcy, so on.
I just want to, I don't think there are more questions probably, just before I forget, touch base, but Jeff Walsh talked about not recommending blocking the road because there's multiple points of access. And I talked to a resident up there, and they said the same thing, why can't we block the road? I said devil's advocate, they can block Henry Marsh on the Oxford side, and you have two means of access cut off. So, it's nice to see the engineer, I think most people would not want that scenario. Dudley put a cul-de-sac, and Oxford, I'm going to put a cul-de-sac, and I have two areas blocked. I want to, you know, counsel, it is a pretty straightforward process, and this board, I know Mark wasn't on the board at the time, but I think he's of the same mindset, if the estimates come in so high after the bids open, the board will not force that project to go forward. The residents came back and said, I don't want it, we're not going to force them. And to Mr. Cormier's point, pass over to May town meeting was at the request of the residents in those two subdivisions. We didn't pass it over, we passed it over at their request, because one subdivision, and Jeff Murray can speak on it probably better than me and Jeff Walsh, went forward with it, and I know everyone's got different costs, and I'm not trying to compare apples to oranges, I'm talking just about the process. The people on Partridge Hill voted to go forward with it. Town meeting was May, I forget, twenty-third, and when was that project ninety-nine percent done? They're doing meets and bounds right now or something, right? But-
Survey is underway, the perimeter survey's been done, they've got, once they deduce the data, they'll be able to do the stakeout for the bounds, that Mark out the right of way. I understand paving hasn't been done.
Yeah, I would encourage anybody that's thinking about the process to take a ride up there, because my one-man opinion, I haven't spoke to my members, that was a good faith estimate performed by the town, accepted by the residents, the work has already been bid, virtually completed, and that road is immaculate. The cul-de-sac came out immaculate.
Right.
And everyone had more issues, want to go down the road, you know, cul-de-sac wasn't constructed according to the original plan, but that's another day, but it, I would encourage anyone to go take a look at what that project looked like, if you can remember before, what it looks like now. And that was a commitment, this board, when Mr. Root was on the board with the betterment policy, shows that, and again, it's apples and oranges, I'm not talking cost, I'm just talking work was done, and I think everyone's going to be happy when it's finished, so. It does work, and I understand it's, as Mr. Cormier said, the number's going in the right direction. Obviously, we wish it would go a little bit better, and Jeff's been able to do some stuff with the town guys doing the work, I mean, we're going to do everything we can to help keep that cost as low as possible. But the process definitely worked in that, in that circumstance.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to give an engineer's opinion of the process that the last speaker asked about, from an engineer's perspective, as to how I would see it play out.
In regards to communication with the public?
In regards to, what I'm trying to do is just let the public know how I see the, not, not the actual communication, but how the, the procurement of services would occur, what happens after, after this cost estimate? It'll only take a moment, but basically, we were charged with identify the work that needs to be done and estimate how much it would cost to get this, get this process started. We did that, certainly don't want to do any work that isn't necessary, but the work that is incompleted, or if things have deteriorated and so forth, if it was a developer's project indicate, they came forward to get it accepted, those are the kind of work that went on the table. Certainly didn't want to re-engineer things. We looked at, in the case of Misty Meadow Estates, we looked at the benefit of trying to reduce the pavement width, because it is wide, it met the standards back at that time when it was approved, but unfortunately, the cost of drainage infrastructure changes that would be needed to accommodate the narrowing of pavement to save the cost of, to save the extra money of pavement that's not needed, the drainage costs outweighed the benefits of the narrow pavement. So, that was set aside. But anyways, there are estimates put together that have been presented to the folks, and that basically establishes, to our best of our knowledge, what, what it might cost to do the work, including the contingency. The next step is to go to town meeting to see if it would be funded by those who would pay the betterment. And if so, then, and if it's approved for one or both of the projects, the next step is to put together documents that go out to public bidding for contractors that would do the work. And there's different forms that that could be, as far as, is it a fixed, a fixed price bud, type of bidding environment, or is it a unit-based environment? Each one has its pluses and minuses. We had to, we, in putting together the cost of the project, had to go item by item to come up with a number. We can't pick a number and then back out of it. So, that's why there's a list of items, a quantity of items, and a unit price of the items. It doesn't mean the town has to procure those services that way, it could go out with the proper preparation of the bid docs as fixed fee. Either way, whether it's unit price or fixed fee, the town will know when it puts out the bid, what it has available for funds. The bids will come in, I'd like to think the bids would be lower than the funds set aside by enough to have a contingency that may not be twenty percent, maybe more, maybe less, but there would be, okay, here's what the bidder's bid at, here's what we set aside for money. If the bid prices are lower, the next, the next thing would be confirmation that the town's going to go forward and enter into a contract with the, with the, with whoever's doing the work, and then the work is executed. That's, that's what I wanted the audience to understand, is how the process works of procuring the services, as I understand them, without getting into great details. Please correct me if I-
You hit it right on the head. All right, great. Any other questions from the crowd on the betterments for Tobin Farms or Misty Meadows?
All right, hearing none, thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, well, I have counsel here, I have one question on a related issue, not related, I mean, if I may.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan.
It's like, I have attorney Blake, just for the people at home, there's an ongoing issue in West Dudley with a gentleman not complying with town bylaws, just give us a, I know, I know what the update is, give us a brief little update.
Sure, I'd be happy to, I'm working with your zoning enforcement officer and your building inspector to try to bring that property into compliance. I am, I'm-
I am aware of it, I have conversations with the zoning enforcement officer, there's been a cease and desist issued, and at some point we will move forward and do what it takes to get compliance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for the questions, and hopefully move forward as opposed to interviews further. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Clark, request to be on the agenda regarding banning the sale of nip bottles in Dudley.
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you again for allowing me this forum. Oh, I dirty the table, I apologize, I'll try to clean it up. Last time, it was before you, I brought out a collection, this is an entirely new collection. There was no need to carry those others forward, there's no lack of these things as far as availability is concerned. At the outset, I should mention that first of all, that my name is Richard Clark, sixty-five Airport Road, and I am representing myself as a resident, as opposed to any participation I might have on town boards at this point. When I was last before you, I think I made, I know I made reference to a number of communities in the Commonwealth that have already banned nips, and I think I had four, Chelsea, Attleboro, and Wareham, I'd like to update that list if I may, add Nashby, Nantucket, Newton, Falmouth, and I believe there's a bit of a buzz in both Pittsfield and Quincy, in terms of some possibility something happening there. Obviously, there's better than three hundred and fifty towns, I believe, in the Commonwealth, these are towns, so well short of all of them, but there is momentum, if you will, out there. Another part of this that I'd like to bring to your attention is the fact that these were found on the side of the road. I don't have any hard evidence, but my suspicion and, and I suspect, is that these have been purchased and by someone who was driving, if you will, a vehicle, consumed, and then disposed of, easily outside of the window, whatever vehicle that might have been, and they just landed wherever they happened to be. I think that might possibly be a violation of the open beverage or container law, and I'm sure the chief could speak more accurately to that. As you can see, the environment doesn't enhance the aesthetic value of these things, they get worse over time, in fact, the town went through not that long ago and did some trimming, I suspect the top of this one fell victim to that, again, no enhancement there. What I would like to do, and I'm going to propose specifically some ideas, or bring to you some ideas or thoughts, one would be a ban at either renewal or transfer of a liquor license, and I do have, and I only regret, I have one copy, this was a decision by the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, and this was in regards to someone transferring a license in Boston, and if you bear with me, I'll just read the conclusion. "Based on the evidence presented at the hearing, the commission approves the action of licensing board of the city of Boston in imposing the condition of no nips, no singles to be sold on the premises on the transfer application of section fifteen alcohol." So there is precedent for that, if you will, as there is precedent for this, if you will, the banning of, and I have copy of the article that was approved at the town meeting in the town of Wareham. We don't have to come up with something brand spanking new, we can just do the copy, cut and paste, copy, and bring this before the public, if you will. Now, that one thought would be, again, at the renewal, the transfer of a license, a second thought, and I hope that this would actually go forward at some point, is an article in the town warrant banning the sale of nips in the town of Dudley. I don't think we want to be the last one to do this, I can only imagine what that would look like in terms of the roadways if in fact we were, and if there were sufficient demand for these things, that everyone who wanted them found their way to Dudley, we would be knee-deep in them by the time this was finally done. I see someone cringing, I'm not sure.
Mr. Clark, can I interrupt and ask a question? Do you really believe that every nip would be disposed of in Dudley, if we're the only ones that were allowed to purchase them?
No, I, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I may have overstated and overreached, but I do believe a good percentage of them probably would find their way onto the roadways, as they do now. These things are not built for the long haul, it's not a case of beer that you put in your refrigerator at home, this is something that is picked up and pretty much disposed of in short order. At least, that is my opinion, I would ask if anyone has another thought.
Any questions from the?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I had one other thought, in addition to that, at the town meeting, I would encourage or would ask, request, if you will, that the board of selectmen send letters to both Representative Durant and Senator Fatman to support legislation in the general court in support of banning nips.
Would anyone like to start?
I'll start. Mr. Clark, I, we live on the same street.
Mm-hmm.
Same problem as you.
Mm-hmm.
I went out and I bought the little trash picker-upper thing, nip bottles, fast food trash, vape cartridges, and an occasional hypodermic needle, that's what I find in front of my home, and I probably have maybe half that amount every week when I'm on my lawn. My thought, and like you, and I've heard from a number of people who are tired of having these, they go for walks, they're on the side of the road, they're on their lawn, they've gotta pick them up. So the solution that you want, irregardless of how to get there, the solution is either less, is to reduce the amount of trash on the side of the road from nips.
Right.
I'm thinking there are, I believe there's three places in Dudley that sell those.
Mm-hmm.
And to give you an, I believe it's three. To give you an idea, Massachusetts, they outlaw menthol cigarettes, people go to Connecticut to buy cigarettes, fireworks, you hear fireworks all the time, they're going to New Hampshire, Connecticut. When I was in college, you couldn't buy alcohol on Sundays, there was a road trip to New Hampshire. I get it, I want you to know you heard, I hear you, I experienced that as well, but I think there's a different solution. If we ban it, people are gonna go to the liquor store in Quinneborg, they're gonna go to Oxford, they're gonna go to Webster. Now, if I get too long-winded, Mr. Chairman, please, don't stop me. Well, you can if you want. I purchase nips one time a year, and it's at Christmas time, because I make Italian cakes and a little Kahlua kind of trifle thing, because I don't need the whole big bottle in my house, I don't, I got a twenty-year-old daughter, I don't need that watered down with the lines in it. But, the thing is, when I go, I also get gifts, bottles for gifts. Now, if we're not selling those in Dudley, I buy everything I can in Dudley, whether it's Sturridge Coffee, Roseds, Chemkeys, same thing here. I'm not gonna stop at three different liquor stores, if I've got to stop in one place, I'll stop one place and get everything. I'm fearful, I'm fearful of, and I've thought about this since you came before us, when you said take it under advisement.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Siggenovich, the board's wording was that they would take it under advisement, that wasn't my request.
Oh, no, that's what we do.
Right.
And taking something under advisement means we're not gonna make a knee-jerk thing, this is a big deal, you gotta think about this, this has effects on small businesses in town. I, what I've come up with for a solution is, and I'd be willing to help you with this, is I think the state needs to look at adding that to the bottle bill, because if you notice canned sixteen-ounce bottles of soda, they get vacuumed up, they've got people walking around with a trailer on their bike or whatever. Imagine nips, that's so much more efficient, you can put so many more in a bag.
I suspect you would even make your device available to someone who is selling.
No, I don't want to, I don't want to touch, I just want them off my lawn.
Okay.
I'm like the old guy shaking my fist at the plants, I want it off my lawn, but, do you see where I'm, if we ban it, they're gonna go to Oxford, Webster, Quinneborg and buy it anyway, and you're still gonna find it, and I, I'm looking at a solution, a better solution, whether it's Dudley, Charlton, wherever you go, and I think that's a better solution. I, it's difficult for me to vote for a ban on this, I mean, I see how people in Dudley, and I grew up here, people like their freedom, they don't like to be told what to do, they don't like things being taken away from them, and I'd like to think, maybe people are hearing this, and maybe if they've got one of these in their car, they're gonna think twice about throwing it out, because it's just not the right thing to do. But I think the right thing to do would be to petition our state legislature to put, add that to the bottle bill, and I would be, I'd get on, I'm not gonna speak for the board, but I would get on board with that.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sorry, I got long-winded there.
Sorry, Mr. Sullivan, you had to hang up.
Yeah, I see what Mr. Clark is saying, I mean, I, twenty-five years, I walked a lot of these streets around here, you see all kinds of stuff on the side of the road, like Siggenovich said, I didn't see hypodermic needles at that time, but, a couple of things, I would submit, as Kerry put it, that I see much more fast food cups, coffee cups, plastic bags up in trees, you know, even soda cans, stuff that have nickels on it, I mean, some people would pick them up, absolutely no doubt about it, we've all seen people do it. A gentleman just got killed in Webster, that was his nickname, he was the can man, he used to go around town and clean the town farm. I see some business owners here that would directly impact, I mean, my friend Jack in the back, I like to frequent his place, I don't do nips, but I see people that do, and a lot of times they go out and they go left, they're heading over the state line, a lot of times they're coming in, they got state, different state plates, and as Kerry put it, you want to try to shop locals, the economy's tough enough as it is right now, and to take something arbitrarily away, what would be next? I mean, I used to see scratch tickets all the time, I'll tell you, I got no pride, I'd bend over to see if someone threw one away, it was a winner, you know? And, again, and I know it's not Mr. Clark's intention, I'm not making light of it.
No.
If this were to pass, if we were to sponsor it and have it pass at town meeting, what would be next?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Clark?
Just to respond, I appreciate Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Siggenovich and your awareness of the other things that are out there on the roadways, obviously, and what would be next? There's a whole laundry list, and I think you mentioned a couple of them that could be next, and I certainly would encourage the town to take that list in consideration, and start working on some of those other containers and the lottery tickets, if you will. This is a step, if you will, gentlemen. Earlier, I forget what the exact timing was, but a young man presented before you not that long ago regarding plastic bags, which are, again, something that's pretty much all over the place, and they're not biodegradable, they'll be there forever, they'll be there long after I'm gone, certainly. That, I think we felt, there was a feeling that that was too inclusive in terms of everybody pretty much who was selling something in town was using some form of plastic bag, or likely using some form of plastic bag. This is a limited, if you will, base as far as the merchants are concerned, and I'm not faulting the merchants by any means, it's really the consumer, the guy that buys it and doesn't give a damn and throws it at Mr. Siggenovich's lawn. You know, if the merchants have some means by which they can educate their consumers and get them to be responsible in the way they dispose of these things, I would applaud that, and I would say, don't ban them.
All right, we're just gonna, I've seen a number of hands up, we're gonna go to this gentleman up front, and then Ms. will be with you right after that.
I do live in.
Can you tell us who you are?
My name is Michael McCarty, I just bought a home here, seven years ago, down on one thirty-one, Quinneborg Road, and I understand his point of view with the nip bottles all over the side of the road, I get them in my front yard all the time. But I, you know, I pick them up, and I put them in a little bag, because I go to Maine once a month, and they're all five cents. I make a hundred dollars, I'd make a hundred dollars a month just on picking the nip bottles up off my front lawn and stuff, I understand his point of view, but to put a ban on a nip bottle, these guys that have a business, they make a good life out there, they're gonna feed their kids too, you can't just ban just nip bottles, because you'll create a bigger problem. I mean, they're gonna buy bigger bottles, now those bottles are gonna be glass, and they're gonna throw that bottle out the window, and you're gonna have glass all over the goddamn side of the road, sorry, excuse my language, but these guys gotta eat too, and so do their families. I pick these things up, I see them on the side of the road, I put them in a little bag, and I bring them home, and then, you know, on my monthly trip to Maine to go see my brother-in-law and sister-in-law, I cash them in, they're five cents. I walk away with a hundred dollars extra in my pocket because of that stuff, I mean, if we can get Massachusetts to, you know, make it a five cent deposit or whatever, so be it, because everybody will cash out on it.
Thank you, sir. I did contact Representative Durant, and they don't look like they'll be getting to that bottle bill this session, hopefully get to next session. Ms.
Hi, my name is Felicia Harney, I live at ten Dudley Hill Road. I got the same issue, but, like, I have beer bottles being thrown in my front yard, Stella Artois last week, but you just pick it up and keep going, they're gonna go to Webster, they're gonna go everywhere they go, they live in Dudley, so if you're driving through Dudley, you're gonna pick up your nips in Webster, why pay, why allow them to buy their stuff in Webster when we need it in our town? You know, it just doesn't make any sense, I mean, and I get it, I don't like picking up other people's trash from my lawn either, but banning the nips is not gonna stop it, because they're just gonna go somewhere else to buy it.
Thank you. Mr. Marcy, you want to assist?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I've thought about this a lot, you know, the last couple of weeks, Mr. Clark, and a couple of points. One is, I think people have patterns, strong patterns, when they, you know, might buy nips wherever they may buy them, and on their way home, whether it's heading to Connecticut or out of Dudley somewhere, they're gonna throw it in the same place all the time, right? Usually on a main road, or a cut-through road that has a wooded area, you know, that, which they bounce and they blow around in that case. I think if you ban them in Dudley, you're still gonna have the same problem, because people are gonna have them, they're gonna get them somewhere. I don't like picking up other people's stuff too, I think somebody mentioned that, it is, it's true. You also can't prove that people bought them here in Dudley, right? And that's probably my biggest problem with this, is like, I would never support something that would take away a business in Dudley's right to sell something. We have plenty of litter laws on the books, I'm sure the chief will help us with that, I mean, I think that's where we need to focus. The gentleman mentioned Maine, I just made it to the meeting, because I came back from my place in Maine, and I have all these water bottles and stuff that I collect, and I have bags and bags and bags of them, and you know what, you return them, I have my son take them, and he makes a little pocket money. It's, that's a real thing, what he said. So, I think those are some things that we will do, but I mean, as far as like taking stuff away, I don't think that, because where do you stop, where do we stop that, and then I don't want, you know, we're not Karens, we're not gonna just like, okay, we're gonna ban this and ban that, and just be smart about it, right? Just be smart about like how we look at things, but I think, I'm glad you reached out to Rep. Durant to see about that, that's a good place, but since we like to act locally here in Dudley, I think that's where I stand, I don't think we ban that.
Gentlemen at the podium, can you tell us who you are, please?
I'm the business owner in the Wasteman Liquor, and I want to say, impose the fine whoever throw or whoever you find, impose the fine and put on social media, and people gonna stop, any kind of the waste, they're gonna throw from the, any kind of the waste. Impose the fine in Dudley Town.
Agreed.
Agreed, we applause for that.
And somebody did a crime, why the business owner has to suffer? We not did anything, whoever the customer or whoever did, maybe they from the Connecticut did throw the nips here, or whoever did, why the business owner has to not sell the nips? Business owner done did the crime.
Agreed. Well said. Well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Rich, were you?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Rich Carmini, forty-nine Airport Road. We should all have the same jacket.
We got half the neighborhood here today.
Absolutely. From an economic development standpoint, you don't want to take away a livelihood, I understand that. Water bottles, plastic bags, I think the message from Mr. Clark here is, he is looking for leadership from the board of selectmen, town administrators, other people who have the ability to get something done. We're putting sidewalks on Airport Road, we're doing our best to move Dudley forward, recreation, open space, we're attracting great people in Dudley, and it's gonna look great. There needs to be a solution to this, it might not be Mr. Clark's first solution, the plastic bag ban, but the idea is, someone should drive through Dudley and say, my, the roads look beautiful, there's no trash, everything's trimmed, there's no bumpy roads, so that's So, that's my statement on this. It might not be one step to get there, but I'd like it to move forward, because pulling trash out of the lake on Earth Day is just, we shouldn't have to do that. Really, there's woods by my house, the wind blows down the street, my row of trees catches everything, so, you know, it's a ritual. I'm gonna give Selectmen Marcy all of the water bottles that I find, and Anthony can...
Like the Seinfeld episode.
I didn't want, I appreciate everything that's done, really, I stood on the town meeting floor and encouraged the town to be neater, cleaner, less polluted, and I think there's a right way of finding it. We don't want to get to a situation where, you know, someone could point to a five or 10% loss in sales, you know, or worse yet, somebody's buying a big bottle and instead of having a nip, you know, goodness gracious, they're filling a water bottle with it or something like that. Just as a side note, there's a big debate on, you know, should you ban it in Chelsea? The city of Boston, for clarification, was my understanding, you weren't selling NIPs right by Fenway. Or, you know, the idea that somebody could walk in, grab two, and have them at a later time. The idea was to control it around areas where public intoxication might be an issue. So, appreciate everything, everybody's consideration for this. I think there's an answer, it might not be in the next week or two, but I would like to see it forward, happy to help in any way I could. Thank you.
Mr. Marcy?
Actually, I'll hold off now.
Sir, last time, we'll start...
Once again, my name is Michael McCarty, I live on Quinnipah Road. If I may say, if this is the case, you'd hire a crew to do the cleanup in the spring and stuff, but why not ask the community to do a volunteer program to do a cleanup? Because I'm willing to do it, like this gentleman just said, I'll do my part, I'll be a volunteer. Will he? Will anybody else in this room? I'll be a volunteer, I'll do cleanup every day.
There's these pamphlets that go out about Earth Day.
I understand that, sir.
So, we'll get, hopefully, a better turnout, if this is, you know, trash is the issue, right? What is the root cause of littering?
People.
People do not respect the people around them, and they throw things out their window. You know, there's very, there's a number of different types of trash. One type is, you know, nip bottles all over. I've done the cleanups with the Boy Scouts, and it's a game to see how many they can count. Yes, sir. So, there's all types of trash, and it's a failure of the individual to control themselves... I'm sorry, we can't just talk out loud, all right? Listen, everybody, I'm, all right, so... Where was I? So, you know, there's all different types of litter, and it's illegal. Open container law, I tried to prep chief for a comment on open container law, it's illegal. It's, it's, you know, what are you doing? You're, first of all, you think littering is a better result than having an open container, because you're not gonna properly dispose of the nip you drank in the car, obviously, right? They're all, it's crime, right? I don't, I don't want to quote chief. Chief, can you come up and tell me, tell us exactly what this is? Best of ability.
You've covered everything, so it's perfect, I don't have to cover very much now. No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things that got into this. Open container laws under 9024I, $500 violation if you have an open container in your vehicle with can or alcohol. That is a concern, you know, certainly, we're not naive to the fact that people aren't buying these things and probably having them on their way home or whatever it is, that's why they're just finding their way out the door. So, it is a concern. A big thing from our end is identifying or catching people in a lot of these cases, because if we don't see it happen or it's not noticed by somebody specifically, that's one of the problems with helping to target those violations. We've dealt with a couple of things, we have some bylaws for trash and littering, like a $300 fine for a local civil bylaw. Excuse me, there's also some criminal offenses through the state about dropping objects on public ways or disposal of trash and debris, because we charge people all the time with dumping trash in places they shouldn't or putting it in dumpsters that they really shouldn't, and those types of things. And if we can identify people, we have gone out and charged people with these things. Talked to some of the communities that have done these types of situations, and again, like a lot of the points that were made, was that people can bring things in from the outside, and that's where a lot of the problems happen. Many of the cities or the places that have done this, a lot of the coastal communities are worried about their beaches or parks and different things that they have there. A lot of the cities have homeless populations and things, and these are cheap sources of alcohol for a lot of the homeless people, so they'll buy those and just dispose of them in places around there. So, there's certain places have certain issues with that. Whether you did it in town, would that stop everything from all over the place? Probably not. Some of the bottles now move up to the 200 milliliter or 100 milliliter bottle, so it's the next size up. A nip is 50 milliliters, which is about an ounce and a half shot type thing, or almost two ounce liquor. The, you move up to the 100 milliliters, you're looking at around four to six, depending on how it goes. So, you do have an amount of alcohol that's in there, and you might unfortunately have a lot more alcohol being consumed at that point where things being thrown. So, I think probably one step to do to start this urgently is correct, tackle the litter issue, and I think if we work with our license holders, I know they've always been pretty receptive to us in the past, we've dealt with them with the false IDs or other things of that nature. If there's a way to target our businesses and inform them of the, some of the laws we have and the problems we have with littering, seeing how they can address it with their customers coming through. Hopefully, we can help to target some of those things as they move forward. But there may be some ways to kind of deal with that and bring this the attention of the businesses and have them work with us to kind of do it. Similar way, I think that the board had proposed that to the folks that were pushing for the plastic bag ban, you know, again, meet with parking shop and meet with the businesses, this is gonna impact directly and see if there's some voluntary measures that could take place first, rather than a heavy-handed situation of a ban. But I do agree, I think the thing of bottle bills and things of that nature, that has definitely reduced a lot of the litter that's out there, because people have a financial incentive to do that. I think the last time we tried to do this, a couple of years ago, for water bottles and things, I think that went away. So, few other things to consider. Another thing about the littering thing, just on that Falmouth down the Cape, they banned single-use water bottles, because that was one of the issues of those, being thrown out and discarded in other places. So, water is now served in cans for individual things, or cartons. So, people have cartons and cans that are now out there, so, they're still kind of turning up in places, because they're obviously not part of a bill or of a ban. And when they had the Falmouth Road Race this past weekend, people brought in water bottles and they're pouring the water bottles into cups and putting it, giving the people, because they couldn't handle the water bottles. So, you have different things that kind of take place of, are you kind of gonna cause more problems on another end with something there? So, I'm always a big proponent, and I'm certainly glad to work with any of the businesses here or in town to try to get the information out there, and start out on a more voluntary, easy-handed basis as opposed to jumping right into any type of a ban, because I don't know if we can necessarily eliminate the problem. I'm glad you brought the fireworks, because that's always been a concern, they're sold right over the line in Connecticut, and then, you know, so they all come into our town, and that's one of the big issues we deal with. So, really, until you get things on a more wide-scale basis and everybody kind of does it at one time, that way it's fair and even for everybody and the same protections are out there. So, in the meantime, I think, I'm certainly willing to help out and work with anybody that wants to do these things voluntarily, or any other information campaigns we need to do.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, you had your hand up.
I did, just a couple of thoughts in terms of follow-up. I've both, reached out to both Representatives Durant and Senator Fatman. I have looked at some of the legislation that's been filed in the general court, and believe me, this doesn't go anywhere near close to what they're talking about, talking about plastic straws, they're talking about balloons in some cases, which seems a bit extreme. But, there is a certain amount of momentum, if you will, again, that there are a number of communities that have put this forth and have, or do have currently bans in place. So, I think it's something that is coming. And some of the arguments that I'm hearing, I suspect probably would have been the same arguments when we went in with a bottle bill and put a nickel deposit on a bottle. And I can remember, and I'm a bit older, I suspect, than anyone sitting in front of me this evening, way back when, when the seatbelt law was first proposed, there was a hue and cry like you wouldn't believe in terms of personal freedom being lost, and I'm an American and I don't want a seatbelt to put on me if I don't have to, and the attorney may remember some of the history of this, and there was a question, one question was, well, I think we've gone past that, where now you can be cited for not wearing a seatbelt, but at one time you couldn't be cited for not wearing a seatbelt, only not wearing a seatbelt, you had to have some other offense. And a question for the chief, when was the last time someone was cited for improper disposal of a nip?
I can't tell you specifically, but I know we have cited people and fined people for littering, probably within the last month.
Okay, question, chief, if the nip has been consumed, is it qualify under the open container law, in that it's empty?
If it was, if it was consumed inside the vehicle?
If...
Well, it's gonna have to be, I mean, we're looking at a lot of semantics, and we can argue this all night long, however, if there's some proof to show that the alcohol was consumed inside the vehicle, and it's actually seen and then discarded, that would be part of it.
Okay.
Because, I mean, devil's advocate, you could say, hey, if I got into a car and I'm driving away and I see a nip bottle on the seat from the person that had it before me, and I just take it and throw it out the window, am I, do I have an open container violation? So, it's usually a two-part process with that.
Okay, I was, but it's not as obvious as eight ounces being consumed out of 16-ounce beer and the remainder in the console.
Well, obviously, a nip could be consumed a lot quicker than a 12-ounce beer.
And I believe that they are, in fact.
All right, so, I think we can probably have this discussion offline. Thank you, Mr. Marcy, one last comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back to something the treasurer said a while ago about Mr. Clark looking for leadership, and I think that's what we're doing, right? We're listening, we've talked, we've put our own thoughts in, centered around the litter problem and bottle bills, which I think is this versus banning things, so, I think we know, you guys, what we're doing up here, that we're gonna, you know, make, we've never not, like, thought about something before we just make a decision, so just want to let everybody know that we will, we've always, we put thought into things before just saying...
Mr. Chairman, just to conclude, I appreciate the forum and the opportunity, and I just wanted to get this out to the public purview. I just want a final note, I believe the state of Iowa has a 15-cent deposit on NIPs. I don't know that we'll ever see that in Massachusetts, but, there are many ways to deal with this problem, I have suggested, I think, several this evening, I hope you would give those consideration. And, again, congratulate Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Saganovich, are making note of the fact that there are a lot of other things out there that we don't want out there, and hopefully we'll have opportunity in future to go forward with getting rid of those as well.
Mr. Clark, we're gonna finish Mr. Marcy's story, he wasn't quite done.
No, just, I wanted to recap what I heard tonight. I heard that, you know, the problem is a trash problem, and we have to figure out a way, working together to like, clean the mess up, versus like, start with getting rid of everything. I think it's always a knee-jerk reaction when people say, oh, we gotta ban something. I know it was a conversation started by you, and I appreciate that, because we always want to talk about it, but I think, like I said, you know, I'm always gonna stand by the, you know, if we want to talk about economic development, and Dudley, since I've been on this board, have tried to push that. I know sometimes alcohol can be a touchy subject, but, you know, they're there, they have a license, they're responsible, it's not their problem, it's people who actually throw it out the window in the same place every day. I believe me, I walk four and a half miles several days a week, and I see them. So, I just wanted, that's what I heard tonight, and I think we, you know, we'll keep continuing to, you know, have this discussion.
Thank you. Last comment, Mr. Sullivan.
I just wanted to echo what the chief said about people getting caught and fined.
I got an idea.
Couple of years ago, I was in the line at Shepherd Hill, and a couple cars were length in front of me, McDonald's back, come out the back window, four kids. Made note of license plate number, talked to the chief, chief reached out to the resource officer, resource officer reached out to the licensee of the car that was registered at Shepherd Hill, and at 2:15, those kids were out in front of Shepherd Hill picking up trash, and the buses and the cars went by, and I would have to hope submit that they didn't pay a fine, but they probably didn't litter again for a long time. So, if you see it, say something. I don't want to be a Karen, as Mr. Marcy said, but, if you see something wrong, say something.
Okay, thank you all. Onto the next agenda item. Departmental communication.
Mr. Chairman, you go first with me.
Yes.
Thanks, Jeff.
Counsel, thank you.
Departmental communication. Chief, you want to wrap it up? Fresh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, not too many items. One thing that, I know we haven't been back for a little while here, so, back in the middle of August, Officer Magus, our school resource officer, held a second Lego camp there at Nichols up at Shepherd Hill, and last year he had about a dozen kids, this time he had around 47, and they all got together and did all Legos and a lot of Star Wars-themed things, and it was a really good program up there that hasn't really been growing. And so, we're working also, too, with schools coming back into session, so we're working, we've got some meetings this week with Nichols College, because then we had a few issues with parking and other things that are up there at the school, so we'll be addressing some of the issues that we have up there, and then also through the high schools. So, we're trying to implement some of the Alice training as well for responses to emergency situations, so I think Officer Magus is gonna be meeting with the principals at the school committee this week, I'll be up there for the meeting as well, just to kind of go over some of the changes that we'll be doing for some emergency response and preparation drills up there with the school. So, I don't believe also, too, we won't have a meeting before the primary election, so I'm meeting with the town clerk this week to go over all logistics for our, the state priming on the 6th. So, just have everybody pay attention to, again, traffic patterns in the town hall and the usual things that we do, and note all the rules on campaigning, 150 feet from the entrances, so, nothing in the lower end of the parking lot, nothing from the Islands Inn that are up in the back, and everybody else is delegated to across the street for any other campaign signs and things of that nature. But everything usually goes pretty smooth, but just to give that as a reminder to people. But again, school's gonna start up, I think the college starts on the 30th, and the local schools start on the 31st, so, so everybody can be paying attention to the buses and more people out on the street. So, that's about it. Thank you.
George.
Been quite a busy week, the water, we've had three main breaks go on. My first one to start off is, we were very serious about non-essential use of water. It came to the point where I actually had to send crews out at night to survey the town, and we did come back with a lot of people abusing that. We're in a severe drought situation, and I'm not gonna get crazy over this, but we are in serious trouble right now. Thank God it has rained, but that's just the tip of the iceberg. Our pumping stations right now are pumping what they can, and one of them is showing signs of stress because of lack of water. So, if you go down the French River, you can see that how much no water there is. We're trying to balance an act of filling a tank that's been completed, along with maintaining pressures in town, along with maintaining water supply to the upper side of town. It's a bad balancing act, we're gaining some ground. Now, these main breaks that have occurred are still constant issues because of pressure problems in that balancing act, and nobody's had any idea of how to do this, because we never gone through this before, nor has any other town probably gone through this. This is a complete shutdown of a supply tank, as I explained earlier in the months. The second one is going to be done in October, and I'm gonna be making decisions whether to proceed with that process or not, depending on what the condition we're in at that time, okay? But just be in mind that there will be other breaks, I'm sure, even in the process of that job, okay? And, we want to apologize to the public, it's out of our control, the state has required us to do this, okay? These are now a requirement to be done any so many years, and once this is done, and both tanks are back online, along with our PFAS prevention processes going on, we'll probably have cleaner water than Poland Spring. But, as of right now, we gotta get through this. We did have a main break on Sunnyside, and that was a major one, that we had to put about 30 feet of pipe in on that one, and we had a main break on Mr. Marcy's favorite street, he's in Main Break Central, Fabio Ave, that wasn't so bad.
See you guys, you know, out the window.
And the big one came over after the fire, that was the one on the trunk line up on Dresser Hill, it's actually a transite main. The new main was from Healy Road on to past Nichols College. And I won't get into why... And I won't get into why, but it, it, we got that done in about three and a half hours to get water back to the upper side of town. There's no, no real way to balance that out right now, then try to backfeed it to anything else, because you're gonna end up with more problems. So we just called in everybody we possibly could to get it done quickly and get the water back in service in a pretty quick amount of time. So we're just asking everybody again, please, no watering. I know there's a lot of nice green lawns that they wanna maintain, but our supplies have, over the weekend, dwindled down to eight gallons at the standpipe. That was it, eight gallons. Eight, eight, and I mean by, eight, I'm sorry, 800 gallons. And it was only a matter of a fact that a lot of people were calling and couldn't get pressure, because some of those residents are at level of the tank. And we're sorry about that, but we're now in better shape. So I think the pressures should start getting pretty good, a lot better, and if the rain continues, we're gonna be in better shape, recharging everything up again. So we'll let it stand at that.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Jeff?
So first of all, the paving project on Dudley Oxford Road's been completed, with the exception of about an 80-foot stretch on the Oxford end. There was a power outage two days in a row with the, with the plant, so they had, had some problems with completing that. But the rest of the work on the Mason Road extension, well, I mean Mason Road, that's not part of the, the water project, will be completed within the next week or two, hopefully be, before school happens, but we've, we've been trying to coordinate with the contractor that's doing the paving work on the water project, so. Also, striping will happen on, on the roadways after, after the pavement's completed. That's pretty much the extent of that. Wednesday, we'll be receiving the de-icing equipment. The water was placed a couple of weeks ago, and we'll be taking delivery on Wednesday and assessing that, that situation to get that set up and put into place before, before winter. And also, one last thing is on the, on the Brandon Road Mill Race project for the, the bridge, we're looking at putting out an RFP within the next week or two for the demolition of the, the existing bridge, and in hopes of being able to get a, a starting point for the temporary bridge that would then go in place and as we pursue funding for that. So that's about it.
Thank you, Jeff. Rich?
Mr. Chairman, fellow selectmen, thank you. After $12 million, what else do you need? Couple things, water bills due on the eighth. Real estate for '22 is officially late, you're gonna see those notifications going out. With regard to the water bill, water sewer bill, it is our first go-through. There are some form to work in progress. Additional information could have been on there, but wasn't included, so on and so forth. Lot of people go through, study their bill. We wanna produce something that's going to be what's expected. Better information's on its way, so look for the next go-around for the water and sewer format changes. The information's there, getting everything to a manageable way is, again, the work in The notifications that come out for, whether it's paving, whether it's a water break, whatever the issue is, are very timely. I had someone come up to the, the counter asking, why, you shut my water off, it's, the bill's not even due yet. It was a break, obviously it was a newer resident and what have you. Beyond that, you know, I talked for hours about health insurance, the, the Gatsby update, things like that. One little item of note, we're gonna be moving forward with some of the investments. Right now, we make pennies on the dollar. You go through and put money in a money market account, better off putting it in a coffee can. If you're saving for a future benefit, a 2040 funding, you have a significant amount of time for that money to be earning. So we're gonna be looking at some equity options in the future, whether it's tying some money out with the state pool, or going with a private investment, you know, along the legal invest. One final thing, we're in contact with the health insurance consultant with the final review for the health insurance policy manual. There's a few things that needed to be buttoned up. Everything is in reaction to what Blue Cross and what the Hampshire Council of Government's Insurance Trust has put forward to be a best practice, or a point they've accentuated. So that's on its way. Appreciate everybody's time tonight, good evening.
Rich, was there any follow-ups? I'm, sorry, I was out on vacation last meeting. Was there any other follow-up questions from two meetings ago on questions about the, we talked about the brine, the process? Were we good?
We concluded that last meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Camagnati stated he was just waiting for the proposition, two and a half ballot questions to be voted on before you appropriated borrowing.
If, if we wanted to go the additional step, you could always go through and do the inter-fund borrowing the second the green light letter appeared, which is sort of taking it out of one bucket and putting it into another bucket based on available funds.
Oh, we handled it, handled it last meeting.
Yeah, just so you understand, it wasn't a contingent appropriation, so it could've been done last year.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you, Rich.
Good evening.
Planning, it's after the whole meeting, right? Water health is next, by the way, so.
Bill Scanlon, Town Planner. Planning Board has been on the summer schedule recently, meeting once a month instead of twice a month. The Nichols College town-owned project has requested a continuance. We opened a public hearing a few weeks ago, and there was a lot of concern among neighbors, particularly regarding drainage. So the staff at Nichols College decided to redesign the project, or do what they could to redesign it to address some of those concerns. The combined Eaton Power project at the Chase Mill has asked to step back, that they wanna redesign their facility before bringing it forward to the community, so I'm anticipating sometime in October that we would get a plan to present to the public and for the planning board to review. I'm currently working on a grant application for finding to implement some of the recommendations in the self-evaluation and transition plan required by ADA. There are a number of recommendations for public buildings that we're going to apply for funding to correct. The application is due within September, and we'll be looking on the order of about $50,000 for that money to make all the town buildings fully accessible. The other thing that's going on is the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee met for the first time a couple of weeks ago, at the end of July. They decided to meet monthly the first Wednesday of each month. So our kickoff meeting was really just to meet the consultant, who was from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, to go over the requirements of those plans. It appears that the consultant wants to do a survey, which we widely distributed to assess the community's attitudes regarding conservation lands and recreation facilities and programs and that kind of thing. So that should probably happen in September or October.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
We got anyone else? Water health, nothing? Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure I get everybody first. Fire, you wanted to go last? Yeah, absolutely. Take us home.
Well, I think everybody knows what I'm gonna talk about tonight. So as you're all well aware, we had the Mace Adhesives Fire. I just want people to understand the magnitude and the scope of this fire. This is the largest fire I ever commanded in my career, so hopefully, I never have to do it again. It's like a 10- or 15-year fire, hopefully, maybe longer. Just a little rundown, it came in as an outside fire by a passerby. When our first crews got on scene, they determined the building was on fire. So the fire had a good head start before we even got there. We quickly escalated it to five alarms. We activated, I actually activated the tanker cart on one, driving here, so I said, you know, that's to get water shuttling going, which set up two bags. We had two 5-inch supply lines. We operated on three separate channels, District 7 Red, which was fire ground, District 7 Blue, which was our water supply channel, and the Dudley Fire Channel. We had the canteen unit, the comm unit from District 7, the canteen from Providence, the rehab and ICU from the fire marshal's office, the fire marshal himself was there. We ended up activating the tanker task force from Fire District 8, and we actually activated the structural task force from Fire District 8 to relieve the crews the next morning. The hazmat team, the state hazmat team was involved from the beginning. DEP was involved from the beginning, and they had an LSP and NEDT on scene fairly quickly, within a couple hours, you know, to make sure everything was all right. Initially, we got there, there's an issue, I don't know if you're familiar with the location, it's got one narrow driveway that goes up a hill and kind of a side driveway that goes up around the back. There is a back access road, but because of low-hanging branches, you can only get a pickup or a, or a car up there, because there's a residential house up and back there that's a totally separate property. We had issues with water in the beginning, there's not a lot of drafting sites out there to begin with. The one down at the corner of Roberts Road is so low, you couldn't, probably couldn't even submerge a hose in it if you tried, so it wouldn't have helped us. So we did take the hydrant at the end of Mill Road. George was aware of it, I've spoken to him all weekend about it, I mean, there was nothing else we could do, we had nowhere else to go. We needed water quick, we had to get it on the fire. Life safety takes precedence over everything. As soon as we docked the fire down and were able to get a hold on it, I could break down the operation for probably a half an hour, reposition everything, and we moved the drafting site to West Dudley Road at the dam, drafting out of the Quinabar River, because we are aware the water department's having issues. So when we were able to, we moved it off the system. At first, it got away from us a little bit, like I said, it had a head start, but the guys did a great job. They set up a lot of truck on the A side, which we consider the front of the building, which had three trailer trucks at the dock, and there's a side building off to the right, and that was protected and saved. And there was two, four 1,000-gallon tanks, two 1,000-gallon tanks, and then two smaller tanks that contain 98% isopropyl alcohol. So we kept those at 60 degrees, because we had the hazmat team keeping the thermal imager on them. So considering the water supply issues we had and the, the difficult terrain, the guys did an excellent job. They set up a monitor on that side and kept that right building from catching fire, which had a lot of nasty chemicals in it, and from the tanks blowing up, because as you may or may not have seen in my interview, if that had happened, we probably would've been talking about casualties, or at the very least, injuries of first responders. So we consider that a save, even though the main building was a total loss. The only thing in the main building was fatty acid emulsion that's used in making wax paper. It's not considered hazardous, and there's no immediate danger. I mean, there are precautions you have to take, you have to put booms around the drains and things like that, but I continue to speak with DEP today. There was a gentleman on Cordis Road that was concerned about his pond, so we, I sent DEP up there, and the LSP went up there, and I don't know the outcome of that, but during the night, hazmat did air monitoring the entire night.
Sorry, LSP? I don't know that one.
It's, I don't know what it stands for, it's like, it's...
It's a site professional.
Yeah, it's like a contractor that DEP uses.
Like we're using it to dump.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Thank you.
So where was I? During the night, hazmat did air quality testing, they, we let them use our six-wheeler, and we got a couple of six-wheelers mutilated, and they went around all night, and they tested the runoff, and they continued to test it for an eight-hour period, and they got no hits of anything on, on it. There was some discoloration of the water because of the, the wax material, but they didn't get any hits on what they test for, like acids or things that are hazardous to the environment or our health, and the air quality was good all night long. So, I mean, everything was done by the numbers, we called everything we needed early, so we kinda, again, once we got past that first hour, we kinda regrouped, and I think it went pretty well, considering.
Thank you. Well done. Well done, thank you.
Then I talked to the chief, and that's, that site has been like a nightmare scenario. I mean, just the location, the access, talking to the chief, and I can't see how they could've done anything different. Did a great job.
Outstanding.
Fantastic, chief. Thank you. All right. Board comments. Mr. Landry.
No chair?
What town?
No, no chairman of the, of the hall?
I got waved off. Board of Health? I got waved off twice, and you called for a third?
Well, it's a dayfully end, that's what happens.
I was trying to be a good supportive citizen in the public here. Good evening, Board of Health. Now that COVID is kinda status quo, we are getting involved in many other things. We're trying to push our bike rodeo, which we just had, and we're already planning for the next year. We also, listening to the discussion about the nips and the litter, we are actively involved in that. Thank you for promoting Earth Day for us. We would like to do more, reaching out, and we're considering reaching out to businesses, see if they wanna be involved, and we're gonna try to work with the police on different ways that, to see if the Board of Health can do anything more to control the litter issue that's going on. We know it's a huge problem, and it all stems from people just, you know, unfortunately, it'd be great if everybody picked up after themselves, but we know that they don't. So if we wanna keep our town clean, we have to go that extra mile and take care of it. And so we're just gonna try to promote more of that. And the Board of Health, at our next meeting, we will, we will be discussing the drought conditions that are going on. Yes, it's affecting the public water supply, but it also is affecting private wells. So we will be discussing that topic and some information out there for people. Haven't heard of any in Dudley so far, but I've heard surrounding towns, people having their wells drying up during this, so just gonna have some information, and if anybody has any concerns about that, they can reach out to the Board of Health office. So that's what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the Board of Health? Board members' comments, Mr. Landry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to every, thank everybody for getting involved, and quite an educational experience for me so far. And I'd like to see more people get involved and come forward and help us out to help you. And outstanding job done by everyone, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Chairman, just don't beat a dead horse or old horse. I don't do a lot of social media, but how do you guys on the board do, and keep me abreast of things? Mr. Landry said, get involved, get your questions answered, and nothing's more frustrating than, we just talked about the fire chief and the great job they did, and right away, someone has to put something on Facebook or on a comment page. You should test for this, because the town does that, you know, it's...
They show leadership comment.
Right, yeah, no, definitely, we have no leadership.
Or the selectmen should take leadership, show leadership.
Well, yeah, just please, please come out of the shadows, ask your questions directly. You don't have to come to the meeting. Fire chief just eloquently spoke about how they did air quality testing, they're doing runoff testing, easily answered. Unfortunately, 100 people probably watched tonight, and some keyboard warrior feels it necessary to go out there and put out a falsehood, or put the seed of doubt out there. That, that does more damage than the good kudos that the chief can give to District 7, the tanker 8, I mean, LSP, all these acronyms. All the good gets washed away, because somebody's sitting at home in the basement with a dark light over their shoulder, wants to try to cast aspersions on us. Mr. Landry said, get involved, get your answers, please come to the source, that's all. Just very irritating.
Mr. Sigenovich?
I was going to say that I've talked enough tonight, but I, the good doesn't get washed away, Mr. Sullivan, people know who, who this individual is, and enough people know to take it with a grain of salt. And if they don't, they should. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Marcy.
It did all that. Thought we had a good, a couple of good discussions today, you know, made progress on the road betterment, I think some questions answered, I think we, I, I think we're, you know, being more, you know, pushing information versus like, having it available for people to come, 'cause they don't often know to go, I think that was a good next step there, to showcase all the hard work that is being done. And, and the litter issue that we talked about a little earlier, I think, looking forward to next steps on that. And showing more leadership on that, thank you.
So, key points of tonight, I think really are, you know, take care of your properties, you know, there's businesses that have some dangerous situations, and we don't want, you know, problems to happen, so take care of your, your property, your businesses. Water usage, it's a real problem, right? You see it all over, I see some neighboring towns across state line, they would dry well, so, you know, don't, you know, the green lawns, really, it's, you're not at that point. You know, there's no metals for green lawns right now. It's about drinking water, right? Clean drinking water, and water available for emergencies. And then, it's disgusting, the amount of trash that's on the side of the roads. We've done it with the Boy Scouts for, for years, and now on Earth Day, you know, I, three tires, a TV, and something else, I'm lugging back to, for, for Earth Day, it's, it's disgusting, never mind all the other sources of trash, right? It's, don't do it. You know, if it's, against the law isn't good enough for you. And thank you all to everyone that, that does go and collect the, the stuff in their front yards and along the, the public ways, where there isn't a representation for that kind of activities. With that...
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Thank you.
If I came off as angry, put you on not, I'm just, I'm just suggesting.